We'll call the June 7, 2011, meeting of the Jackson City Council to order and ask Councilman Willie Moore to lead us in our invocation and pledge, if you would, please rise.
Would you all bow with me, please, for words of prayer? Lord gracious, heaven and father, we come before thee this morning with bowed heads and humble hearts to say thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us from our very existence up until this present time. Heavenly father, we ask that you be in our midst as we make decisions this morning that will benefit all citizens of Jackson, Tennessee, and Madison County. Heavenly father, we do understand that it's not because we've been angels, but through thy mercy and grace that we have another opportunity to serve. Thank you for your many blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Now I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
You can show all council members present, with the exception of Councilman Hayes, if you would. Item four is approval of the minutes of the April 21, 2011, and the May 3 meeting of 2011. I think council has a copy of those minutes, and if there are no objections or any corrections, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as distributed. I have a couple of introductions this morning, just acknowledgements. We have an intern with us here in City Hall, Markeith Brown, is now working in risk management. Markeith, are you here? Ha, we got him working, but anyway, he's out doing his job. It's good to have him here. He's going to be receiving a BA degree in criminal justice from Leighton College next week, matter of fact, and his goal is to become an investigator for the FBI. So, council, you all remember that in your future. Also privileged to have some members of the other Boy Scouts here. We have St. Mary's Troop Six, Scoutmaster Tom and Sandy Jones, and with them, we have exactly one dozen Boy Scouts. You guys stand, if you would. Let us recognize you. Let's give them a hand. At this time, I'll entertain any invitation for public comment. If you have any comments on any item under new business, if you would let us know when you get to that item, if you would raise your hand or let us know verbally, then I'll be sure and call on you. So, any item under new business. We have one proclamation to read this morning, and Hank, let me ask you, if you would come on up, and you may bring your honoree and the families and your board, if you would. Each year, we look at this proclamation in honor of the Stone Cup, and we have an honoree. So, it's my honor to read this proclamation and make it a part of the minutes of this meeting. It's a proclamation whereas Billy Walker is distinguished citizen of Madison County, Tennessee, and has been an important and integral part of this golfing community for many years. And whereas Billy was born on 18 December, 1945, in Nashville, Tennessee, he was raised with a great love for all sports. His parents, Bill and Margaret, fostered his love by coaching and shuttle him and his siblings back and forth to events and practices. He attended junior high and high school in Sheville, Tennessee, where he was a star in three sports, football, basketball, and baseball. He received an athletic scholarship to Middle Tennessee State University, where he played both football and baseball and was elected to the MTSU Hall of Fame for both sports. Whereas while in college, he discovered golf and was hooked immediately. After college, he's worked for 40 years with justins, providing quality class rings and graduation accessories to high schools while serving his country by spending six years in the Tennessee Air National Guard. And whereas as a gifted multi-sport athlete, Billy's natural talent and dedication to practice begins showing almost immediately, immediate dividends in his golf game. His many accomplishments include seven club championships at Humboldt Country Club, seven club championships at Jackson Country Club, and won Tennessee Golf Association Championship, the TGA Senior Four Ball with his partner Riley Kale. And whereas Billy also played the legendary Fried Chicken Circuit with the likes of Butch Cashin, Danny Green, Tim Jackson, and John Fisher, and Scott Lockridge. Billy had a formidable record against strong fields, including victories at the Humboldt Strawberry Festival Tournament five times, the Myland EO Fields Tournament three times, the Trenton Pinecrest Invitational, the Fulton Kentine Invitational, the Paris Fish Fry Tournament, and the Crockett County Invitational in Alamo. Whereas Billy has also served in leadership roles in the Humboldt Country Club and the Jackson Country Club. In addition, he's served on the Tennessee Golf Association Board for 15 years and is the Director Emeritus. He has always expressed a strong interest in the rules of golf and is also ready to assist when faced with difficult rulings. And whereas behind every great golfer is a patient and loving wife, Billy and his wife of 44 years' age are blessed with daughter Tracy Hensley and son Taylor Walker and four grandchildren. And whereas in recognition of his life and dedication to the furtherance of the great game of golf here in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and as part of the 2011 Stone Cup, the official golf championship for Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, let it be known that the honoree for the 2011 Stone Cup is Billy Walker. And therefore be it resolved, Jerry Guest, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby jointly proclaim the 2011 Albert A. Stone Junior Cup as the official golf championship of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee. The 7th day of June, 2011, urge all citizens to participate in this annual golf championship and to express appreciation to the family of Billy Walker for his contributions stated therein. Billy, it's an honor for me to present this proclamation to you on behalf of the citizens of Jackson, Tennessee.
Well, I know there's important business to carry on here, but I would like to thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this, and Hank, and you and your committee, I appreciate being selected, and it is an honor for me. I very much respect Albert Stone, who the tournament is named after, Big Al, as we would call him, and Butch Cashin, a great friend of mine, golfing buddy, has also been an honoree, and he's here and so have my other golfing buddies. And I look forward to being around this year to see who is the new 2011 Stone Cup champion. I see several candidates out here, Danny Green, Jeff, and Todd. I know that you'll, Si, know that you'll be giving it a shot. Thank you very much.
Just a quick word. We would certainly invite all the, anyone that lives in Jackson or Madison County or works in Jackson, Madison County, or is a member of a club in Jackson, Madison County to participate in the Stone Cup this year. We have a very unique format. It's looked upon as one of the most difficult tournaments in the state of Tennessee to win. We play 36 holes of metal play. This year, on the 16th, will be at Falcon Ridge, and on Sunday, the 17th, the second round of qualifying will be at Jackson National. And the top eight qualifiers, then, will go into match play at the Jackson Country Club the weekend after. Our champion from last year was Scott Metcalf in a very hard-fought victory, and we just encourage the council members to come out and play and tee it up, and we thank the mayor and the council for its support. God bless.
Okay, under item seven is first reading, some consideration and ordinance to rezone property located on the north side of Campbell Street, just north of Ridgecrest Road from SC-1 Plan Unit Commercial Development District to RG-2/PRD, General Residential Plan Residential Development District, containing 17.3 acres, more or less submitted by Campbell Street Development, LLC.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertaining to this rezoning request. It was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they have recommended approval of it to you. This is an area that was originally zoned commercial, SC-1. It's located out near the shops of Campbell Street, on Campbell Street, just south of the hotels, the new hotels that are out there. It's just north of the PRD that's on the corner of Ridgecrest, the northwest corner of Ridgecrest and Campbell Street. The developers are asking to downzone, basically, this property from commercial to residential, planned residential development. They propose an apartment complex. It's a very high-end apartment complex. They're leaving a lot of open space and clustering the development into the center of the property, and the PRD gives them some flexibility on the way that they can do that. So, we are supportive of the project. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of it to you, and I'll be able to answer any questions you have.
Just one.
Yes, sir.
We talked about this earlier, but I wanted to make sure that I clarified this. The difference between the RG-1 PRD and the RG-2 PRD
Yes, sir.
is pretty much what?
The RG-1 and RG-2 in relationship to the PRD just affects the density. And because of the way they're utilizing the property and the open space that's required, they needed the RG-2 to get the density for the clustering that they're proposing for the development. So, that's the only difference. RG-1 allows a lower density. In this case, they're wanting to utilize a higher density.
They're looking at fourplexes and sixplexes versus?
Well, it's more units per acre. When you're dealing with the PRD, it's, you know, as you move up, it's how many units per acre that you can get.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure of that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Stan, wrote at this ordinance? If not, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion. The second, before we vote, guys, let me, this is first reading, so let me open a public hearing for anyone here who wishes to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Hearing none and seeing none. Council, please vote.
And the vote passes seven to one.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Stan. Item two, under first reading, consideration and ordinance to amend the text of the official code of the City of Jackson, Tennessee relative to Animal Control Title 10. It's brought by Councilman Newdecker.
This affects the code in a couple of areas. One, we're adding some definitions, one, 10-105, 10-106, which is, and 10-107, which is enforcement. 10-106 is restraint confinement property. 10-105 is the number of animals. Basically, the main structure remains pretty much the same. I did make a change at 10-102, but that's not necessarily required. The 10-102 that you see right there was, pretty much, came out of 44 Tennessee State Code, Tennessee Code Annotated. The exception also came out of Tennessee Code Annotated. The noise prohibited is the same. All cruelty to animals. Number of animals could be defined pretty much by whether it's a hazard or not. In any event, any person keeping, they can keep any number of animals they want to as long as they're not presenting a health and safety hazard to the owners or the property owners around them. Constraint and refinement to property drops chains and chains in regards to being tied, fastened to dog houses, et cetera. It remains that it asks it to either be pins and/or fencing or electronic fencing in regards to the properties. Again, you've had this for a couple of months. We've had a chance to take a look at it. The only change that I had made to it when it was requested was tethering within a confined space already. Is there some question to it, whether we should or we shouldn't add that or just continue with that, or we could add it later if you'd like? But if you'd like to strike that, I'd be glad to do so. Enforcement goes down to the environmental court. Any questions?
Any questions of council as to this particular ordinance? Again, we're on first reading. If not, is there a motion for approval? So moved. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. This is on first reading, so guys, let me again call for open a public hearing as it relates to this ordinance and see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in support or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance.
I have a question, if I may, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Councilman Newdecker, so anyone with their dog presently chained would have to buy a fence. Is that correct?
Either fence or pins. Pins are pretty readily available at most commercial lots. Or you can install an electronic fence, which is less expensive as well.
When would that go into effect?
Well, the ordinance as it stands right now, would go into effect immediately or after its second reading. I might suggest to council that we might want to put this thing in effect 365 days from today. That gives everyone about a year in which to comply. Would you like to make such an amendment? I'm glad to second. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from, go ahead.
Are we voting on the Title 10 separately from the Chapter 3?
Yes.
Okay. I'd rather do that.
Okay, we are in public hearing, and if there's no comments from the public, then we'll close the public hearing, and I think we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any additional questions? If not, council, please vote.
And the motion fails with seven members against, and one was in favor.
Okay, item eight is under second reading. Consideration and ordinance for the 2011, 2012.
I'm sorry, Mayor. We had a second item on that, which was supposed to be voted on separately.
What was it?
That's the vicious dog section. Chapter 3.
You don't have that listed separately on your agenda?
No.
We just mentioned that, said we wanted to vote on that separately.
Okay, okay.
We agree.
Okay, all right. Then, Sam, you want to put that in form of a motion then?
Well, let me, the vicious dog section is mainly a cleaning up of the existing resolution or ordinance that we have in effect today. It doesn't change the number of members in the body, it just changes where they can obtain those members. Also, it cleans up some of the wording. There is no county executive anymore. There is a county mayor, and there is a mayor of the City of Jackson. So, it mainly, it just basically cleans up that language.
Okay.
That's it.
Make the motion for approval?
Have a motion and a second. Since I suppose we need to go back into a public hearing on that and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this, of this part of the ordinance. If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
And that fails four to four.
Okay, item eight, again, on second readings, the first item, is consideration and ordinance for the 2011, 2012 fiscal year operating in capital budget. We have Al and Karen here. I think we have some amendments or
Changes.
Changes.
Morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
Karen, I would like to address and just go back and remind you that this was the initial budget presentation that was passed on the first reading after we recessed on the 31st and came back on the 3rd of June. And during the scope of the review of all these items, numerous changes were pointed out, and we appreciate the give and take there because I think we've come up with a more accurate budget to present to you now. Ms. Bell thankfully kept score on all of these changes, or I would have been lost. But what you have in front of you, and you indulge me a minute with my chicken scratch notes, but you have a clean copy of the changes. And if there are any additional changes or disagreements or deletions from, you can bring them forth as we go through here. Basically, anything with a 110 prefix is the general fund, and the top portion Karen has labeled and included all the expenses, whether they were increases or decreases. There was only one revenue change to the general fund. And as you know, we always have a balanced budget, so just to make sure everybody understands here, if you add up all of the increases to the expenses, that's $243,000. If you add up all of the decreases, that's $199,000. The balance of the difference is the $43,912, which is then covered by an increase in revenue. So, we end up balancing 243 to 243. Now, and I'll let Karen go through these item by item, but I just want to reiterate that these were changes suggested by you, the council, and some that we came across. For example, just to highlight a few, Councilman Brooks, you remember, you requested the travel and training be increased for the city council, so that's in there. Councilman Wallace, you questioned several times benefits that they didn't literally pass the smell test, so to speak, and Karen has gone back and adjusted for those. You also pointed out one major decrease, defect on my part, and that's that I had left off the transfer from Health and Sanitation to the Highway 70 landfill. I had it there as being funded, but the $65,000 was not in the 131 account, transfers out. So, we've tried to address everything that you, the council, suggested or questioned, and then some of our own. And I'll let Karen, I'll ask Karen to go through the detail here.
Well, the first one, as you said, Councilman Brooks, was the increase for the travel and training for city councils, so that adjustment was made. We also reviewed some of the grants, the reentry grant, the targeted community grant, and of course, in our budget, the revenue should match the expenditures, so there were adjustments there. Some folks that were in the targeted community grant had been, their benefits were in the housing code, so that adjustment was made. As Al pointed out, appropriations to other agencies, that has decreased, so we made a note of that to show that decrease. Utilities on our new Bell South Police Building, they're going to split that between the drug front and metro narcotics, so that is less on the general fund, so that adjustment was made. There was adjustment made to the training supplies for the fire department because they are going to receive some EMA Homeland Security money for some of their urban search and rescue this year, so that grant was acknowledged in this. And if you remember, Ms. Jernigan noted that there was a decrease in salaries for central dispatch. However, there are brief additional positions that benefits weren't out calculated for, so that adjustment was made as well. And the public services complex, they had put the individuals in there for full-time salaries. Those are only part-time individuals, 20 hours a week, so that adjustment was made. Also, Mr. Yates, when he was here to present the Sportsplex, indicated they needed money for SOD this next year, so that adjustment has been made to transfer to landfill from the Health and Sanitation Fund. And again, you see with the 141 and the 142 drug and metro narcotics, the utilities for the new building.
I did have one thing that I'd like to take a look at, and I didn't mean to not give you advanced warning. I just saw, I reminded myself of it this morning. Item 43-190-400, which is building and street materials, we budgeted, I believe, $31,341 for that particular account, and yet this year, we're on target to make somewhere between $75,000 and $76,000 as far as the, a number of dollars that we possibly could spend. So, I'd like to increase that line item to the, to 76,967. That would be an increase of $45,626.11 or something closer to that, or just, yeah, just round it on. Yes.
I'm not sure I know what you're talking about. Is that something we can do at the next meeting where we've got the information on it, just adjust the budget?
I can, and without looking at the detail, that might be one of the ones. If you remember, we told you that we had to make adjustments for the state street aid.
It is.
And I'm thinking that's probably what it is, so there was adjustment there, but I'll be more than happy to take a look at it because that needs to balance with our gas tax revenue that comes from the state.
Yeah.
So, we had to make some adjustments to the SSA.
Well, this is just an expense item. This is an expense item, so I'm not sure.
But we can't show more expense than we show we're going to get revenue.
As far as that, well, okay.
Yeah, we had to move some of the monies into street construction, street cleaning to balance our state street aid because it needs to match with our revenue, but I'll be more than happy to take a look at it.
Please.
Any other questions from council? Go ahead.
Also on the budget, I'm not going to recommend we make a change today, but I am going to want to talk to the staff and you also regarding the garage operation because I don't really like to see the garage operations charge out, fully charge out their services so that we can get the expenses allocated to the correct departments, but I'd like to do that after the fact. We can make a budget later in the year if we decide we want to do that.
Okay. Any other, any other comments or questions from council?
So, I take it from the two comments from Councilman Newdecker and Councilman Wallace, these are all follow, these are follow-up items?
Yes, it's nothing that?
Nothing to that.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I suppose we're dealing with an amended budget here after first reading, so let's go ahead and.
Now, I did not, Mayor, change these numbers. This is the initial presentation. These are the changes which then will be folded into the new ordinance. The reason I didn't change it was because we can literally make changes as we speak here. So, if there are no other changes, what you're approving is the initial ordinance that was presented, plus and minus the changes on the shift.
The amended, the amended version that you all gave this morning. Any other questions from council? I guess we'll need a motion to approve the budget as amended. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second and discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote passes seven in favor when abstaining.
Item two is consideration and ordinance to set the property tax rate next year.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three, under second reading, is consideration and ordinance to close an abandoned unnamed alley running east off Philip Street, just north of East Chester Street submitted by the planning staff.
Move the adoption.
So moved. Motion, second and discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is consideration and ordinance to reapportion the nine council districts of the City of Jackson.
Most to approve.
Have a motion, this is second reading, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion on that? If not, council, please vote.
The motion passes with six in favor and two abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Under item nine, under new business, is consideration of a lease agreement for the parking lot located across on South Royal Street at the corner of East Main Street. This is obviously a parking area for the new annex that we're getting.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second.
Question.
Sure.
Is there a date beginning and end to this particular lease agreement?
July 4, 2011 is the start date.
Yes. Is there an end to this?
How long does the lease run?
It runs for three years. We have three, one year.
I see it. Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Council, please vote.
It's about unanimous.
Item two is consideration and demand response of sales and service agreement with Internoc. Sorry, it's Dan, I'm sorry.
Just one point, just point of order. Remember, we had a change in the draft from the first reading on the reapportionment plan. We had an amended plan because we made some changes to the original plan. We really need to get a motion on the amended ordinance, and then y'all can vote on that. I just, just don't want to.
Yeah, okay. Let's just do a little, a little backtracking here, if we can, as to, except for motion as amended. as amended?
Yes, the ordinance you have is the amended ordinance.
Be the, be the second reading, be amended ordinance for the reapportion of nine council district of the City of Jackson.
Yes.
So this is, this is the amended ordinance on second reading. Can we, can we get a motion for the amended version?
So moved.
Have a motion, second, discussion. Counsel, please vote. Thank you, Stan.
All right.
And that motion passes with six in favor and two abstaining.
Okay, going back to item two, under new business, consideration of demand response sales and service agreement with Internoc. Morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
This is essentially an agreement that the city has been entered into for several years now that actually pays the city to reduce energy consumption whenever TVA needs a little extra juice off their system. And so this is phase two of that agreement. Phase one has come to an end, and this is an expansion of the program by TVA.
And the terms of that's pretty much the, pretty much the same.
It's pretty much the same, there are a few minor differences. The length of hours that TVA can actually call the city to respond to has been reduced. The payments have been reduced slightly, but other than that, the contract is the same.
Okay. Counsel Wallace.
How much does that save the city in energy costs per year?
It's approximately $10,000 per year.
Any, any questions on this, this agreement?
This is ready, that's good. Move to approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. Item three is consideration of contract with PB Americas, Inc., for the 2020-40 Long Range Transportation Plan. Swite.
Request for proposals to provide planning services for the development of the year 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan will receive from two companies, PB America and Neil Schaefer. PB Americas, who is in Nashville, and their partner, partnering with Gresham Smith, was selected because they included a project scheduling deadline that ensured completion by the federal deadline, and they had more experience in updating long-range plans in Tennessee. And basically, you've got the entire letter in your packet, but basically, this plan will include the update to the travel model to use the 2010 census data, to include new bicycle and pedestrian plans, and also update the list of projects to address the current and future needs in the Jackson area.
Okay, any, any questions from council on this?
Is this a required expenditure by the state?
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Is there a motion for approval of the contract?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any additional discussion? Now, counsel, please vote.
Motion passes second in favor, one abstaining.
Okay, Ms. White, let's, let's take, I'll just let you go, item four through seven. She will. Having to do with the East Chester project.
The first one, change order number one to Ronald Frank's Construction Company, $21,446.8. And again, the full letter is in your packet, but basically, the designers did not design for heavy trucks, so they had to go back and revise these specifications, which of course increased the contract amount. They also replaced residential concrete steps and added handrails for the steps, as well as sand, to help seal the brick pavers in place.
Okay, we'll, we'll need to take each of these, a vote on each of these, so is there a motion to approve this change order?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes seven in favor, one against.
The next change order is also to Ronald Frank's for $36,596.7. Mulch was washing out of landscaping, so they had to put the landscaping edge beds in, and they also added tree staking. And at the same time, JTA asked for bus shelter benches like they have in the other stops, and they added a pedestrian push-button pole, and it was moved to meet the ADA requirements.
Move to approve.
A motion for approval.
Second.
Second, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
The next one is six in favor, two against.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think it's duly need noting that these are federal funds, and these are not city funds.
That's true, thank you, Howard.
It's not costing us anything.
Yes, they are federal, this is a federal project.
Okay, I'm six.
All right, the next one is again to Ronald Frank's for $151,001.14. Concrete sidewalks and driveways were vandalized, and they had to be repoured. Fuel cost also increased, and they were included in this change order.
Okay, is there a motion for approval, change order? I see, we got a motion?
Second.
Second.
Fuel, fuel cost was included in the contract, the increase in the fuel costs?
Uh huh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes seven in favor, one against.
The last one is to Gresham Smith for $149,306. The contractor didn't finish this job by the date set by T.D.O., which was December 15th, and therefore, we had to pay the construction inspection for an additional, additional 180 days.
Move to approval.
Approval, second, discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passes seven in favor, one abstaining.
Okay, I think that's good, then. Before we go to the next item, it's city attorney here. Good, okay, so they're hiding behind the post, okay. It's wherever a good attorney needs to be. Item made is consideration of amended and restated stadium license and use agreement between the City of Jackson and Jackson Baseball Club LP. So I have Al and Louis.
Our city attorney.
And Tom.
And Tom Hanson.
She will.
Up to the podium. Tom Hanson is representing the Jackson Baseball Club LP. He is the general manager of the team, and he has represented the, the ownership in working out this proposed agreement, and Louis Cobb was our legal counsel as we negotiated back and forth. I sent an email out yesterday explaining the fact that we did have this on the agenda from day one, but at the pre-agenda meeting last Thursday, we were unsure as to whether we could take care of all the legal things that had to be covered and agreed upon by both parties, so we had said that we may not be able to address it. But we are able to address it. We would like for you to, to bear with us. The reasons why, and there are several reasons why, we want to keep it on the agenda. And Randy, I understand your position, and what we'd like to do today, since there are so few changes from the existing 2008 agreement on an exception basis, go through those. You can ask questions and then make your decision accordingly. But we would like to have this time in front of you, since we've got Tom and Louis here. Basically, let me just remind everybody about Pringles Park. Pringles Park, we had in 1998, was the opening season. We, in order to construct the eight million dollar park, we used a million and a half out of our fund balance, and we borrowed six and a half. Within three, a little over three years now, that will be paid off. The interest plus the principal will be roughly nine and a half million, so nine and a half plus one and a half, we will have $11 million invested in the asset of Pringles Park. We also, and I've mentioned many times before, it's a gem of a park in the Southern League, but we are the smallest venue, and that is obviously a detriment as far as keeping ownership in place without somebody wanting to sell and move. It's worth, as far as replacement value, we've been told anywhere from 25 to 30 million, but that's only if there is a team playing in it and fans attending. If we didn't have a team, it's to the other end of the spectrum. So we look upon this as a real opportunity, because we've never been able to get more than a three-year agreement, to my knowledge. And the ownership has come to us and proposed a nine-year agreement, and it even includes a million dollar penalty clause, should they decide to leave for whatever reason. So we look upon this as a opportunity. Tom can explain a little bit more as to the timing, as to why baseball, Jackson Baseball Park, Club, LLP is coming to us at this time. Louis can address any and all questions as far as the changes from the initial 2008 contract, so I'll turn it over to Tom at this time.
Thank you, Al. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council members. We've really, we've owned the club since May of 2008 and have had a great partnership with the City of Jackson, and I know that, that our owners absolutely want to do everything within their power to keep the ball club here. Some of the timing things that Al is talking about is, number one, we feel that we've got some momentum right now, and I, I think economy is helping us a little bit, but as we've gone through the name change, which was a very difficult and serious process that we went through, we've gotten very, very positive response to changing it to the Jackson Generals. Our preseason sales for this 2011 season have been very good. Our season ticket sales were up significantly. Our group sales were up, our sponsorship sales were up, selling of our luxury suites have been up. We still need to keep that momentum going and to get more people to the park. Our walk-up attendance, we still need to continue to work on that. We feel that with some of the history, and, and overcoming some of that history that has gone on here in the community, that us extending the lease by nine years with everybody knowing that we're going to be here long-term will continue to help with that momentum. So that's one of the very significant things, is we still have half our season to go, and by the way, we're playing very well and only one game out of first place right now. But we still have over half the season to go. We think that if we could nail this thing down immediately, it will continue to help with that momentum in getting the community back involved with professional baseball here in Jackson. And secondly, and really more importantly, there is a group of investors that are currently working with our ownership group on some significant decisions that they're trying to make, and they need to know that professional baseball will be here to stay in Jackson for the long-term before they can actually make some of those decisions. Timing is very, very critical on that, and that's probably the most important factor that we've got right now going for why we want to push so hard to get something finalized immediately. So thank you very much for your consideration.
I'd like, Mayor, go ahead.
No, either, either you or Louis make over just the major, the two or three major changes of this agreement versus the one we've had for the past three years.
I'll start off by, the first three and a half pages are basically definitions as to what field maintenance means, what's janitorial services, what does team mean, what does term mean. No changes basically there at all. I think if I were you, I would want to go to page four and look at the city's obligations under this lease. And basically, there are no changes as far as the license, the utilities, the city is responsible for all utilities. The maintenance of the stadium, the city is basically responsible of, because we own the stadium. Community promotion, which where we have worked with the Diamond Jacks in numerous...
The Generals.
Excuse me. The Generals. As you can see, I falling behind here. Going over to items E, F, G, H, I, J, those were all items that were in the initial contract agreement that was signed January of, or December of 2008. Let Louis comment on item K, which was in that agreement, but the wording has been changed a little bit. So Louis, if you could just address item K for us on page five. What I tried to draft there was language setting forth that, let me give you just a little bit of history. This is the third time the lease has been amended and extended, and there have been changes. A big one is that there was a TIF district created out in that area that's being used to promote the economic development around the stadium in conjunction with the stadium. As I understand it from Tom's description of David's dream, it is to have a convention center and a convention center hotel, and that the synergy between the stadium and the hotel and convention center along the interstate seems to be something that if the funding and the market conditions are right, will be the benefit of the owner, the city. So what we try to do is derive this plan that if the proposal comes together, and if Mr. Freeman can fund at his expense the cost of the hotel, owning and managing the hotel, that the TIF money will be used to support both the infrastructure to make that happen as well as to build a convention center around it, then it will be Mr. Freeman's or the team's obligation to own, run, manage, and so the city would not be spending any of its, of its revenues, it would be funded only with TIF district money. And so that's my recitation of that concept. Whether that happens this year, next year, or ever is unknown, I think, and unknowable, but that's what we're trying to do, is to create a vehicle. And in consideration for that, we said, well, what happens, you know, if things don't go or if it's built and the team leaves, and they had a million dollar flat fee penalty if they left early? And that's, so that's where that came from. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Tom, would it be, would it be safe to say that, I know it's listed as convention center, but depending on needs of time, that it could be convention slash arena? I'm just looking at long-term for the city. Oldman Arena is, is dated, obviously, and has a limited lifespan, and I'm sure a lot of that will be dictated on potential use, you know, on what the market study calls for. Is that, is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, absolutely correct. I, I think that it's really more of a vision right now, and there have been no plans laid for anything, and I think that the language that Louis has come up states very clearly that it would be jointly agreed upon between the club and the, and the city as to what would take place out there.
Questions? Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Go ahead, questions. Tom, you're saying that, I've, I've got a concern over receiving a 19-page document this morning and expecting to vote on it on right now, and I appreciate y'all trying to explain it to me, but the 30-day timeframe for us approving this next month, that's going to make a huge difference in the momentum for the club and the investors. I mean, if you didn't approve it 30 days ago, you know...
Yeah, I think it's not as much the momentum of the club, Randy, as it is the investors. There are some critical things going on right now with some decisions being made, so this is a, a very important issue right now for those investors and our owners. So that is very critical. The momentum of the club, no, that's not near as critical. I think that's just kind of icing on the cake for some of the stuff that we're trying to do.
I would think the momentum would have done better to have this approved before the season tickets went on sale.
Yeah. And, and I think that as we went through the name change, that was a big positive, and we did that back in September, kind of pulled the trigger early on that one as well so that we had that during the offseason. So really, this is kind of the second stage of that.
You need to find Al for that slip too, like you find everybody else, but slip on the names.
It's a dollar.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
The, the other question I had was on the, the use of the TIF money. Are we limited, if the, the hotel goes forward and, and the infrastructure and everything is needed, are we saying that the only place we can use that TIF money for is for, for that, or can we use it for other, other items? I'm a little confused on that.
The way I think that would happen is, the TIF money is collected, and the Industrial Development Board is part of that process, and the city has agreed to cooperate and to make this happen. The city has input on the... The city has input on the creation of the convention center, convention center arena, whatever. That's still an amorphous idea. The TIF money would be used to fund this. If there's more money, it could be used to fund other things later. But this, in effect, is giving this, I think what the investors want to know is, is this going to be something that the city is giving a priority to? And this is, this is the way I think to best demonstrate that, yes, that has become a priority to develop a convention center in conjunction with their hotel at this location for that purpose. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess my question is, is if they're going forward with the hotel, we've got this project we can use TIF money for. And if we have another project that's asking for TIF money also, are we limited to only using that TIF money to the hotel arena until that gets finished and then we can go back to the other one?
I think the best way I would characterize this is that by this document, the city's making a statement that we're slotting this as to be a high priority, first priority of the TIF money from that district right now. I think that's, that's what this really says if you boil it down to its essence.
Okay.
If that idea doesn't come...
Well, I understand if the idea didn't come, we use, but my concern is if they go forward with that and we've got another project we'd like to fund part of it or some of it with the TIF money, then we just can't do that until we finish this one. That's my concern, I guess, is where...
My opinion is that we could do something, but it would be second in line to this. We're giving this a priority right now.
Okay, okay. The other question is, some of that TIF money has been slotted, I believe, to improve the back of the stadium. We're still going to be okay to continue with using the TIF money for that? Of course, I guess we're not building a hotel yet, so maybe we'll be finished before then.
When the TIF was initially approved, Randy, it was based on an economic impact plan. And that economic impact plan back in 2009 was centered around, the focal point of that was a hotel conference, hotel slash conference center. But economic times changed such that there were no takers, so to speak, to go into that project. Subsequently, we came back to you, the council, and you approved a project not to exceed a million dollars, which we just talked about, or you identified, and that is the cleaning up of the backside of that stadium, eliminating the cutsu, taking down trees, landscaping it, putting in a pond with a fountain. I don't have the drawings in front of me, but if you remember when Tennessee PLM presented that to you, we had all the renditions. And basically, that was a dress-up of the outside of the stadium because that's the first thing people see when they're coming from the east.
That also had a phase two. Is that kind of off the table now and being replaced with this?
Phase two is, is off the table, yes. And so far, we have contributed through the growth of exit 85. And the TIF is working as a TIF is designed to because you have a base level of tax and then any of the incremental tax each year above that goes into the TIF and is channeled to the IDB. First year was 65,000, the second year was 85,000, the third year tremendous growth, 225,000. So we have forwarded to the IDB approximately 370,000.
There was also some debate over the TIF money way back when we approved it about what area it could be used in, whether it had to be specific to this area or could be used in other areas of the city. What was the final decision on that?
I think that decision, Louis, you correct me, is, would be up to council. I think it could be. But, but no, no movement from, from the IDB will occur until, until council gives their, gives their affirmative nod to it.
Yeah, and let me just say one thing. There was a, an incentive plan in place with the hotel concept, TIF money and so forth. So this is not a brand-new idea. It's just a reworking of an old idea or updating an old idea.
Are there other major changes to the contract besides this that you're going to be talking about or...
Let me just continue through and then I'll have Louis come back and address primarily the penalty clause that David Freeman, the majority owner, has agreed to put into this new agreement. If you look at, on page six, the club's obligation, I hope I get it right this time, but the only thing that was really changed there is item E. And that's where we rebranded, or they rebranded, from West Tennessee Diamond Jacks to Jackson Generals with the emphasis on the city of Jackson and it being a drawing card for the city, although we still entice and encourage outline areas to come. But that is basically on page six, the basic change there. No change to the concessions, item G, R, H, as the club private facilities, the skyboxes. I would like to say, if any of you haven't been out, we took two suites and combined them and have come up with an entity called the Officers Club. And I'll let Tom address the success so far with that.
Yeah, it, it actually now seats 40 people and it's got a balcony, a restroom, and it's just absolutely first-class. And so we've been selling out with getting groups to come in. And we really needed something like that for the Southern League All-Star Game, for the OVC tournament, for a hospitality suite. And so typically, the most we could seat in a suite was 20. And we've doubled that with this suite. And it, and it really turned out very nice and in coordination with the city of Jackson. We completed that during the offseason. So you should come on out and use it. It's really, really nice.
And I think we've had tremendous success with the businesses in the area, even in midday, using that as a meeting room.
Yes.
So article, stadium-related revenues, I guess is the next article that we would address. And Louis, I don't think there was, well, I know there wasn't any change as far as the stadium license, which is really the lease or the rent, and it's covered on a subsequent page. But we do receive $2,500 a month, $30,000 a year. There are no parking lot revenues because they're not charging for parking. We still retain the, or give back the 2.5% surcharge on tickets. The allocation of revenues would remain the same. The naming rights, and Tom, you might want to elaborate on this, on Pringles Park, I believe, end in 2012.
Yeah, the end of 2012.
And obviously, we will be courting the local industries and businesses to try and replace that. And that revenue would go to the club. There's no change. That's, that's been in every lease agreement we've had with the Lozenacks or the new owners. And continuing on, we cover again, let me just address item seven, which is an incentive arrangement. And without going into a lot of detail, let me explain to you what we set up here. We get revenues back, we're not a sports authority, but we do have state legislation that gave us the ability to recover both local option and state sales tax on products sold within the park. And this is somewhat of a history of what we have received. And over a five-year period, that averaged 129,234. So then in subsequent years, any amounts over that base, then we do rebate to the club. I don't have 2010 actual on there, this is a projection. But there, it was under the 129,000 because of economic times in 2010, so there was no payment made. But that basically is one incentive for the Generals and for us to increase our revenues Louis, you want to, just instead of me going through all the legal items here, you want to address those that changed as far as any of the insurance coverage or...
Can we go backwards on the stadium event?
Yes.
That's, that's any event that's held at the stadium, sales tax, any of that goes to the, to the, so if we have a concert or something there, those sales would be included?
Right.
Not just ballgame?
It's not just...
But that's only at the stadium itself?
Right. And I would like to stress the fact that thanks to the vision of the current ownership, we are using Pringles Park far more than we ever have before. We just concluded the Ohio Valley Conference Baseball Tournament, which is, it's not obviously a replacement for the NAIA Girls Basketball Tournament, but it does draw a lot of people because the teams are from UT Martin, Cape Girardeau, Eastern Kentucky. And again, all those people come in and they spend money accordingly. Tom has also branched out, and we just recently had the High School All-Star Game. We have numerous local colleges and high schools have been able to utilize Pringles Park. Plus, Tom, you might want to expand on some of the nonprofits that you've...
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that we saw when we came in is that Pringles Park just wasn't being utilized like it should. It's such a beautiful stadium. So this year, we had seven high school baseball teams with 14 local high schools being able to play on it. We had a couple of college games scheduled. We had the OVC, as Al mentioned. We had the Fourth Annual High School All-Star Game for seniors. And so 40 seniors from West Tennessee get to participate in that. We instituted that back in 2008 when we came onboard. And what Al's referring to is, is we've gone to all of the nonprofits and invited them out to use the stadium for their events at no charge to them. And so if you look at the Heart Association, the Cancer Society, the March of Dimes, all of the different organizations, many of them utilize Pringles Park to have their events. Now their, their walks, their runs, those types of things. And so we've really partnered with them and don't charge them for the use of it. It's a wonderful venue. It's a wonderful asset, and we feel that it was really being underutilized.
One item I would like to address on the revenues is the cost for maintenance. And basically, we have a provision in here if the, come on down to item I, item one, excuse me. The cost of maintenance, obviously, the stadium is maturing, getting older. There's more need for repair to the irrigation system, the scoreboard, the video board, the stadium lights, the ballfield lights, et cetera. We have worked with the Generals and previously the Diamond Jacks in trying to hold our maintenance costs under 265,000 annually with an incentive in there where if it comes in under that, we would share with the ball club. If it comes in over that, likewise, they would share. What we've actually done, because our park's maintenance labor has been so much required with all the disasters, the floods, et cetera, and the upkeep of the sportsplex, that in most cases, we have paid them. We've opted out. There's another section in there where they can do the painting and the cleaning of the stadium and we reimburse them. So I think, Tom, you might want to comment on that, but that's been a win-win situation for both of us rather than us hiring labor off the street to clean the stadium, et cetera.
Yeah, very much so. I think that it's worked well for both parties, and I think we've done a good job on keeping that number this year down below the 265 in working with Al and the entire city on all of those different items.
But there are incentives, and this is nothing changed from the contract in 2008. The city's skybox, which the mayor makes available to any and all employees if they get in line and request it. We do pay 18,000 a year for that, same as other companies that have a skybox. This limits, the 20,000 limit, we know over a period of time, the cost would change, et cetera, and the skyboxes have to be renovated, et cetera. But we're talking 18 to 20,000 for that. Now, basically, Louis, if you could pick up and on page 11, if you want to go on, and I believe there's very few, if any, changes, but if you would want to take it to the end under default, item six.
Let me go back to page nine of the license fees. Since we were going out nine years with eight three-year options to renew, I asked and they agreed for a consumer price index adjustment at the end of nine years. And then each renewal term after that, that was a concession I requested they made. On insurance, I wanted to add that the insurance proceeds go to the city. That was a request, a change I made, they agreed to. With respect to the reduction in rent stadium, I added the word significant so that it had to be a significant part of the stadium that's damaged to have a rent reduction. And on relocating, I added the word to be temporarily relocate without triggering the city's rights. That was a request that I made in page 12 on books and records. We added some additional records that we could access to determine if necessary. And it was the income and sales tax returns and the National Association Professional Baseball League reporting forms, a request that I made that they agreed to. And then the, one of the most significant, probably the most significant change here is on page 14, if they were to leave early, that there is a very simple, very clear million-dollar penalty that they would have to pay to break the lease. And so we were going out that length of time and making the priority of the stadium hotel convention center, and they agreed to a penalty if they left early. Now, there's one, well, there's one other technical change, paragraph seven on attorney fees. It also puts the words arbitration or other proceeding. Again, just a technical change I requested they agreed to.
So in summary, and we'll open it up for questions, basically, it's the 2008 lease agreement amended for the term being extended to nine years, which quite honestly is what we, the city, have been trying to do through several ownerships. And that's to tie down and make sure that we have someone playing in that 11 million-dollar asset because it's not worth 11 million if we don't have a ball team. And we have to admit, we are the smallest venue when we go up with cities like Birmingham, Montgomery, Jackson, Mississippi, Mobile. We are ahead, I believe, Tom, you question, correct me if I'm wrong, of the head of Huntsville.
Yes.
Which Huntsville seemingly should be outdrawing us. But it would be very difficult for us to replace this double-A Southern League franchise. Several years ago, when I first came onboard, Mayor Farmer had me, when we knew that the Lozenacks were looking at selling the franchise, he had me look at the Texas League, which is not even single-A ball, but it's a step below that. And of course, they were very interested in coming to Jackson because of the stadium and the opportunities it would present, but it would have been a much lower class of play. It's, it's great now to be able to watch the Cardinals on TV and see Ryan Theroux, Terrio, who was here in, what, 2000?
Yeah, with the Cubs.
With the Cubs Farm Club at the time. To see players who have come up through the double-A team here in Jackson, and you would not get that if we had to, I don't want to say stoop, but if we had to go down to a Texas League type of players.
Okay, any council...
And then I'll quit, Mayor Farmer.
All right.
Page five, item A, City Night, was that in the previous contract?
Yes, it was.
Have we added like $15,000 in our budget, our new, new line item for...
That was the sponsorship of the Ohio Valley Conference Tournament.
Okay. That's not, that's in this contract then?
I don't think that's addressed. No, that was just a side agreement after we lost the NAIA. We're trying to give numerous tournaments.
Some of these things you have to tell me twice.
Question regards to, this is for Louis, and for, regards to sections, this is page five, section H, I, J, and K, which are amended parts of the contractual agreement, I'm assuming, because the original agreement didn't include especially H, I, J, and parts of K.
I think they were numbered differently. Tom, you have the old agreement. But go ahead, Frank.
Well, yeah, we didn't have a TIF district in 2008 when the original agreement was signed, and now we have a TIF district. And the question that I have for that is that, and maybe I'm incorrect, maybe I'm wrong, the TIF agreement was all supposed to come before council as a separate agreement, I believe, and now we're including it in this one. And we're tying the city contractual agreement in regards to what can and can't be financed or what cannot be... agreement in regards to what can and can't be financed, or what cannot be... What projects can't be done or can be done. And I'm a little bit concerned about that particular aspect of it because, you know, we had tried to remain flexible and we were taking a look at your plans and working with them and probably glad to work with them, but this one seems still a little bit ambiguous. I don't know what's actually going to be done. I don't see a... I haven't seen a drawing for hotel. I have seen kind of a conference center at one time, but I don't know what's being planned here. And I think that was one of the agreements that we had when we created the TIF district, that the city council would approve this once seen a plan.
Mr. Hanson has lonely his copy of the 2008 agreement, and paragraph H in that agreement said, "Provided that a tax increment financing district is established."
Yeah.
And then this one says, "It has been established." So the other was looking forward, this was looking backwards, but H addressed the same thing.
But part of the TIF agreement was have council agree to a design.
I don't disagree with that, but...
And that would still be in place?
Right, so those are just kind of mirror images. Delta faucet property is the same, although it's called something... Yeah, it's the same, the letter's different. Now, the TIF district requires a presentation of a project and the approval of a project. What this is doing is saying the city, and I think this is what Tom and the owners wanted, is committing to give this priority to the TIF process.
But we would still have to approve, you know, whatever the plans were, council would...
Yes.
Still go through planning.
Yes, and it states that in there it would have to be a joint agreement.
Or in other words, there are things that are unknown and which we can't bring forth to approve, but in show of good faith, we're saying we're slotting this as a priority project if it, if they can get their side of the thing rolling to make it come together in a partnership.
And if you remember back in the TIF agreement, Councilman Newdecker, there is a provision that if no project is identified after three years, then the monies can come back to the city automatically.
Right.
And like Louis is saying, this is saying that we're giving this priority, but it was the basis for the economic impact study that backed up and was attached to the TIF district resolution and...
We're still working within the dynamics of a TIF district project approval process.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Will we approve the amended and restated stadium lease license for the nine-year term?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
The vote has the seven in favor, one again.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, counsel.
Item nine is consideration approval of the following general fund write-offs. I guess we can take these one at a time. Al, you want to...
To help with this bill.
Yeah, Al and Karen, if you would.
Basically...
Al, if we can just delay here just a second on this item. Counsel, Francisco.
I just have a statement I'd like to make to Mr. Hanson and the ownership of the Jackson Generals. I thank you so much for giving Jackson an opportunity to have the economic development we're going to have for the next nine years. This is going to enable us to entice, I hope, and it looks like it appears it's the right thing, to entice new business and new industry. And I personally thank you for the job that we have an opportunity to provide for ourselves. And thank you again.
It's all about jobs, isn't it? Okay, item nine, guys.
Basically, Karen, you might just address, and I'll lead into it by saying that there is a ten-year statute where you have to write off uncollectible property taxes. That's what we are addressing here in item one and two. And in the 98 write-off, which we brought to you last year, which I believe was around $80,000, something of that magnitude, this year, we're up to $108,000. You can see it's basically the $90,000 base tax, and then you have 10% penalty and 10% interest. But the 98 base tax, which we already wrote off, there were, what, two items or so that didn't make it through the process, so we're just going back and correcting that.
That's correct. Yeah, it was in chance rate at the time. It did not get released. So this is just a cleanup for the audit.
Now, on the 99 taxes that need to be written off, let me just do a little explanation on this. Basically, we're talking $90,000 base tax. In the year 1999, the property tax billing was $18 million and change, $36,000, I believe. So the write-off amount is less than one-half of 1%, which I think would stand up against any municipality. If we end up after going after $18 million and 10 years later have to write off $90,000, so I don't think we have anything to be ashamed of there. Let me explain further here that 59% of the line items are for personal property tax. And as you know from previous conversations, we are very limited as to what we can do legally on personal property. Karen and I have talked about that with our tax attorney. We cannot have a default judgment and a tax sale. You can't take over to the courthouse steps this piece of equipment here and auction it off, literally. So 59% of those were personal property taxes, and three line items in and of themselves make up about 40% of that 59% cost here. Let me just show you as an example. Here is Alabama Farmers Cooperative, and we're writing off a total of $18,000. Now, this was before my time, and I can't find anybody who even recognizes that as a business in Jackson. But if you look at those type of line items, what has happened on personal property also, when you, as a business owner, submit your list of personal, your property assets, your equipment, if you don't come back subsequently and update that, the assessor's office does what's called a forced assessment. In other words, if you had this piece of equipment here and you valued it at $1,000, but then in subsequent years, you didn't update the farms that were sent to you, they, literally, the assessor's office has the right to assign an increased value to it. They're doing less and less of that now, but basically what I'm saying is many of these are inflated values. You wouldn't be able to go, if we could locate Alabama Farmers Cooperative, we wouldn't be able to go and find the Farklift or whatever pieces of equipment made that up at the time. So I think this is a very reasonable amount for the write-off, less than five-tenths of 1%. Any questions on the items one and two?
Will you approve them?
We probably need to take these individual. Talking about the 1998 property base tax write-off. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item two is $1999 of property tax.
So moved.
Motion, second, discussion. Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
The third item is delinquent public building accounts, which means venues that were held at one or more of our facilities, and credit was extended, and we're now unable to collect that. It's basically, this is the $5,485.33 is made up of two particular venues. This one was the West Tennessee Cultural Heritage Association. We do add penalty and interest after a while, so it has grown to $1,588.48. This is uncollectible by reason of bankruptcy.
Will you approve them?
Okay, motion made, second?
Second.
Uh huh, sure.
Al, do we now require payment upfront, or is credit still extended, or...
We require a deposit, but this is the balance that was due and not paid after deposit. Is that not correct, Karen?
That is correct. Sometimes they may come in and ask for additional items and equipment, so it's difficult to collect everything upfront.
The last item on the write-offs is the delinquent garbage.
We didn't vote in there?
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Counsel, please vote. Item three.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, item four, delinquent garbage write-off.
And this number to show that we don't give up just because we're putting something on the write-off, I think you probably initially had a number of $16,500 and some, and in the interim between the time the agenda was put out, and today, we've actually collected some of those monies. Basically, we're talking about $16,482.55. And we've kind of, we've tried to categorize these so you understand why we're coming to you with write-offs. The first column is bankruptcy, so anywhere there's an X marked there, we have no legal means of collecting those. Those were protected. Many times, we have situations where, I'm going to skip a column, go over here, and where businesses just close. They go out of business without filing bankruptcy. They leave the area without leaving a trail, et cetera, and we're very handcuffed there in pursuing, especially the small amounts that are on here. We actually have bigger fish to fry, so to speak, in trying to collect hundreds of thousand dollars worth of, and millions of dollars worth of delinquent property tax. If we don't have a contract, which we are now, Kathleen's here, we are making a contract part of the process. We have since, how many years ago?
July of '04.
Of '04. So if we have a contract, then we can turn it over to Louis, and then we make a decision, you know, whether it's worth the legal cost of going after $145 or $58 because in many cases, it's not. But believe me, we do not give up. Even though these are written off, Sonny Phillips will still be going after these people because in many cases, they have delinquent property taxes along with unpaid garbage bills and et cetera.
Okay, is there a motion for...
So moved.
Approve. Okay, we have a motion. Is it second?
Second.
Second. Questions, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Al. Item 10, I'll ask Louis to handle this. Consideration request by Windstream Communications for a telecommunications franchise agreement with the city of Jackson for laying fiber on the city's right-of-way.
Mr. Chairman, I thought we was omitting that.
I thought we tabled that one.
We did?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We consider that off the agenda, yes.
If I could, I'm Mark Haygood of Windstream, and I've traveled to the area. Was not made aware until yesterday about 1:30 that it had been pulled from the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
If I could take a few moments, trespass on your time.
Any objection from counsel?
No objection.
Okay, please come up and identify yourself.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council member, I'm Mark Haygood, and I'm director of network development for Windstream Communications. We are looking to lay some fiber optic lines in the city of Jackson's right-of-ways. We are what's known as a wholesale telecommunications carrier. We provide services to other communication carriers, such as your cable companies, your local exchange carries and so forth. We started the process back in around December or so, working with the city engineer's office. They've been very cooperative and helpful with that so far, I believe. I won't take words out of their mouths, but those activities and our plans have been okayed. I'm not going to say approved, but it seems like they're on target to be done. We've got some schedules to meet in terms of delivery to our customers, and those are in jeopardy now. With this now being pushed off for now potentially August, obviously, of being a final reading, it puts those schedules in jeopardy. We've come to an agreement of the form to be used, which is your basic franchise ordinance. I think we'll be the third entity using that and being governed, if you will, under that. We're in complete agreement with doing that. Our goal is to work with the city and be able to do our business, let you all do your fiduciary responsibilities, protect your right-of-ways, and also your taxpayers' monies and such. We ask that we go back and have an opportunity to begin our work as soon as possible. Understand now, we'd be looking at a July 5th and an August timeframe for final. If by chance, we could go back and do something like go ahead and meet the insurance and bonding requirements of the document, if it's a possibility for it to be considered that we begin doing our work, obviously, it's at risk. If we weren't to reach agreement, we would have to basically, in a sense, abandon it and leave the city. For that to be something, I'm not asking you all to make that decision today, but something to consider on that. Any questions about what we're looking to do?
Yeah, I have a question in regards to, I mean, what you're actually doing is just laying cable and you're selling something to Charter or Aeneas or JEA, is that correct?
To another telecommunications carrier, yes. It could be to AT&amp;T, to Verizon Wireless, to Sprint, to what's, well, Quest, whatever it was.
So you're not technically hooking to each house or any particular house?
No. We are, in a sense, we compare it to a transportation, we're a long-haul carrier versus the other people on the ordinance or taxi cab in terms of doing retail business. We provide, if you will, large capacity to your service providers. We do things that allow your, you get your 3G and 4G. They suck a lot of capacity, and it's, that's what makes it able for you to use those playthings, if you will.
I guess if this particular question I would ask Louis, that you had showed some concern in regards to revenues and how to obtain revenues, and I can ask the question why the standard agreement wouldn't work with this.
We had taken the JEA franchise as the model. There were three things that we needed to have changed. It was just a matter of the time that I had available to talk to Mark and talk to Anita Larson.
Her attorney.
Yeah, her attorney. I don't think there'll be a problem working it out. It's just in the vortex of all the other stuff that I had. I didn't, wasn't able to get it done by Thursday. I think I expressed that to y'all, that I had some questions, particularly about how to divide the, or to pay for a franchise fee and how to do the accounting. I don't know if y'all remember, we had with one provider, not JEA, some serious audit issues about not getting the franchise fees that we were doing. It was over $100,000. And so I don't have any reason to believe we'll have a problem, but I hadn't been able to work out the exact language. It was concerning an audit versus an unauthorized statement, back and forth. I don't think we'll have a problem working it out. What I hear him saying is they want to be able to put the equipment in place and get ready to rock and roll.
Yeah, these are just connectors and cable and fiber optics, and there's not really a...
You just went above my pay grade, but...
It's all right.
I think the engineers had worked that out, and I haven't heard any issues from the engineering planning department. It's just a matter of being able to break and set, trust but verify.
Question is, we have to approve this twice, or we just approve it once? This is...
It's a franchise. I think it has like an ordinance. I'll check up. My understanding is a franchise has to be approved on two readings like an ordinance.
So if we prove today, we've still got 30 more days to change our mind. If we see something in the document we don't like or...
That isn't existing yet, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that he's concerned it could be two more months before they're up and running.
I think what he's saying, and what I've heard him say in the past and what I'm not arguing with, is once it's approved, can he get things rolling and in position? I don't see anything, I mean, if we're not going to agree on the audit language, we'll know it by the end of the week if it's approved, and he wants to get in position and take the risk of going ahead and start getting things going, awaiting the final approval in August, I think he's asking, would that be okay? I don't see any problem with it as long as he understands the risk. I think that's correct.
Yes, in regards to the audit issue, is that we're not going to walk away from the city of Jackson, our business here, over that issue. We'll work that out. I think there are things that can be done, either whether it be a regular audit, not even possibly every year, but every five years, and other years you may request it. I think the thing is, the other entities that are on the franchise are much larger businesses inside your city, and it's a much greater responsibility to govern those things. I think that ours would be something that we could set it up and have regularly scheduled audits, or as the city determined that it be needed.
And what I'm looking for is just the ability, if we see the need, to go in and get the information that we need, just like we made, we agreed to make the accommodation about the local office. There's no need for them to have a local office here. They don't have any retail customers here, so it's something we'll get worked out.
My question is in regards to his business, though. I mean, a month delay, how is that going to affect you?
Well, we've got delivery schedules to our customer.
Right.
And actually, the delivery schedules are in July, so we're not going to meet those to begin with. So we're pushing out, working with them to do, do that. We, we did start the process here probably back in, in December in working through this. This is the most lengthy part of all of these, these types of activities. And the construction takes about 10% of the overall time of the project. But we're getting to a point where we've got to do something in order to appease our customer. It's a large customer. We're doing it with these folks all across the country, and they prefer it to be done on time.
Well, we really don't have a document to work with today, and hopefully, through your presentation to counsel, at least you may feel some comfort in the fact that you can go ahead and proceed with, with, at your own risk, obviously, what needs to be done between now and the July meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, counsel, you have any? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Another thing, just a comment, is that I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and I'll commend your, your baseball team. It's great to have one. And I will tell you something, that the name change here worked out a whole lot better than did in Richmond. It's the Richmond Flying Squirrels.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, item 11?
Mayor, if I can...
Yeah.
One thing to add is if they do move forward and start doing actual bores, our department will go on and be collecting those bore permit fees as we would anytime someone bores in the right-of-way. So I know that they're going to be moved forward at their risk, but it will be at some of their expense in fees that we'll be collecting in our department.
Mr. Chairman, when you say move forward at their expense, there's no contract, is that correct?
There's no contract, there's no franchise agreement. So if he moves in any direction, it'll have to be at his own risk at this point until counsel approves the franchise on two readings, we think, two readings. Check that and say, we, is that basically bottom line? Okay.
Let me ask one question, Mayor. Does this mean that his customers can just hook on to his fiber optic and not have come through us for the franchise fees like Charter and JEA?
Louis, you want to...
That's one of the things we have to work out. The proposal is, is to have a pro-rata based upon the percentage in our jurisdiction versus the entire area. And that's, that's one of the two areas that we... And, and, so, I don't know. What I think he's doing is, is he's not coming out to your house to do telecommunications, that he's going to somebody who has thousands of customers in the area and taking that and providing it at the wholesale level to take it somewhere else. So he's, he's not in direct competition to deliver cable TV or telephones to the home.
Well, if I'm not asking that question, I'm saying, well, these people might have to pay some of our franchise fees that we...
Yes, they'll have to pay something. How we go about calculating that formula is something I still don't have, I'm not sure about. This is the first time we've had something like this come up, so...
Would you consider it more like a contractor laying cable?
No, it's really at the hotel versus the retail level, I think, is... And Mark, help me.
It's what, once again, is that what we are is a, is a wholesale carrier. We'll go back and whether it be, let's say, we're delivering traffic from St. Louis to here for Charter, or carrying some of their traffic. In a sense, obviously, we'll be paying a franchise fee for the portion that is delivered inside the city here. One of those things also is that you probably don't have response, or the capability of doing interstate, to tax interstate commerce and things like that. So part of those things have to be worked through. We've done this with other municipalities in terms of handling this, and, and what's done is that you're able to collect your, your taxes and fees on those that are attributable to the business that transpires in your streets.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 11 is the board appointment, zoning appeals board, reappointment of Max Hart. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And on the Keep Jackson Beautiful Board, the appointment of Mark Carter.
So moved.
Second, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And item 12 is consideration of budget amendments.
Okay, we have two budget amendments, one that I presented to you on Thursday evening, which is for the Health and Sanitation Department requesting emergency purchase of a knuckle boom loader to complete the pickup and debris cleanup. This was something budgeted in their FY12, but have a need now, so they're just going ahead and purchasing now. The amount is 108,700 dollars, and this will come from the Health and Sanitation Fund Balance.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
The second one is one that you should have received this morning. I apologize, but this is an emergency purchase that came up over the weekend. This is for an air unit and concessions at Pringles Park. Total amount of the replacement is 11,995 dollars, and this will be transferred from Fund Balance to the Capital Fund.
So moved.
Motion, second, second, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, a seven in favor and one against.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Before we address item 13, this is the, this will be the final council meeting for two of our council members, Councilman Moore and Councilman Newdecker. And certainly, would be remiss if we did not thank them for their service to this city. We're certainly a better city because of their service, and sometimes you have to reach down very deeply to seek elected office and to maintain that for, for a number of years. So I think certainly, unless catastrophic event happens, we have to come back for a call meeting, which maybe we won't have to do that, that we should just recognize them. And I want you all to know that, that from the people, City of, City of Jackson, the citizens, a certainly appropriate award or plaque will be given to them representing their years and months of service on the city council. So on behalf of the citizens of Jackson, I thank you two for, for your time dedicated to this city, and I ask you all to acknowledge them, if you would. Okay, Councilman Bray. Item 13, consideration of invoices over 10,000 dollars.
So moved. Second.
Second, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, a seven in favor and one against.
Be no further business, meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Carter.